I'd like to call the December 15th Board of Selectments meeting to order at 6:30. Thank you all for your patience. I think we're have our video on right now. Jim Pinio, do we have need for a non-public session?
We do. I don't have the RSA, but it's collective bargaining agreement discussion.
Okay. First item on the agenda, we have minutes for November 3rd, 2021. I would like to table those. The minutes we have are we're really in draft form. I have gone through and made a whole lot of corrections and changes and gave them to Amy, and Amy has a few areas she would like to change. So can I have a motion to table those?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next set of minutes are the minutes of November 17th. Do I have any corrections? Anybody have any concerns? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're moving on to a public hearing. The Wolfborough Board of Selectmen will hold two public hearings on Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, at approximately 6:30 p.m. at the Town Hall, Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfborough, New Hampshire, and on December 15th, 2021, at approximately 6:30 p.m. at the Town Hall in the Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfborough, New Hampshire pursuant to RSA 41:14-A, acquisition or sale of land, building or both, the Board of Selectmen to swap land with Mill Street Investment LLC, 88 and 96 Lainer Street Tax Map and Lot, 218-8 and 9 Boundary Line Adjustment. And I'll turn this over to Jim. Do you want to give us any information on this?
Yeah, we are having some technical difficulties this evening, so I'm not sure if I did. It's muted. Yep. So this particular public hearing is about the land swap boundary adjustment, which is taking place down at the parking lot down in, sorry.
Lainer Street?
Lainer Street, thank you. We've been through a number of renditions of this, and the property owner is on the same page, and we feel this is a win-win. It puts sewer easements on our property and takes travel paths and puts them onto town property versus private property.
And am I correct that it's about the same amount of land we're switching?
It is an equal portion.
Board members, does anybody have any comments, questions? Oh, first of all, I got to open up the public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to give us any comments on this land swap, boundary line adjustment? Hearing none. Now I'll close the public hearing, and we'll see if we can get, ooh, can we get rid of the echo? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Can I have a motion from a board member?
Move to authorize the Wolfborough Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town of Wolfborough to approve pursuant to RSA 41:14-A, acquisition or sale of land, building or both, Board of Selectmen to swap land with Mill Street Investments LLC, 88 and 96 Lainer Street, Tax Map and Lot, 218-A, 8 and 9 Boundary Line Adjustment, and sign the deeds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda, it's another public hearing. It's the Wolfborough Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Tri-Tech Bent to hold a triathlon at Albee Beach and the NIC on July 30th, 2022, from 5:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And do I have somebody here who'd like to speak to that?
Vince Vicero, should I take a Vince? Since the last time I was here, I was able to secure an event sponsor. The NIC will be the event sponsor. The second item was that the use of the parking lot down at the Albee Beach was something that would not be available. I have since talked with Martha Cummings from the New Hampshire Boat Museum to utilize property that they own across the street from the actual museum itself for the transition area. Unless there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to give us any public comment on this? Being and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions?
Just on the wording, it says, it says this still meets the requirement of a nonprofit, so it's not sure. It says not sure this meets the requirement of a nonprofit, and I'm wondering if that could be clarified for you.
We got a new, here, let me pass you it. A new one came in in which the NIC is written up there. It says Albee Beach slash NIC. We asked him to give us a new front page with the NIC there, and he has provided that for us. It came in late this afternoon.
Okay.
So is everybody else comfortable with that?
Yep.
Anybody else want to see it? Nope, you're comfortable? All right. Was there, I should have passed this out. I didn't see it all here. Here, Luke here. Guys can see that.
Sure, we have one. He just gave me one.
All righty. And you can see the NIC has been put in there. So he meets the statute for a temporary event because he has, it's a nonprofit that is applying for the permit. Is there any other questions, concerns?
I just say I was pleased that you addressed the concerns that we had about using the parking lot at Albee Beach there, because right in the middle of summer, it's actually very busy there. So appreciate that, being able to work that out and come up with an alternate location for the transition from the swimming to the bike event, so.
Yeah. The community likes to have events, and we usually can make it happen.
Yes.
And I thank you for your work. Any other comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
Can make the motion to approve a temporary event permit for Tri-Tech Events to host a triathlon at Albee Beach and the NIC on July 30th, 2022, from 5:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Permit number 2022-2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to give us any
Mostly a question directed to Mr. Pinio. We got in the proposal for the warrant article for Pop Whalen. We had a warrant article question last year, Article 13, Pop Whalen Enterprise Fund Advisory. It was no money attached for us, a study to determine the impact of the enterprise fund, how it was functioning and so forth. Has that been done?
So we've done some in-house evaluation of the enterprise fund. We found that the rates that we adjusted going forward should actually make Pop Whalen a sustainable enterprise fund. However, it will, would not be sustainable if the facility was required to pay for the upcoming structural upgrades. But as far as for the operations of the facility, yes, it is sustainable.
And who did the study?
It was myself, Christine, and Casey worked through revenues, estimated revenues, did the rate study on it, and came up with the rates going forward to make it sustainable based on average usage over the past, I think it was four years.
And then Article 14, right after that, was regarding $125,000 for general taxation for providing professional design services for the roof, insulation, dehumidification, electrical upgrades, and scope of work done. I assume that's been done. So who did it? And was that sent out to bid to get somebody to do that work?
So the, this was a partnership in conjunction with the Friends of Pop Whalen. The Friends of Pop Whalen had evaluated the number of various architects. We ended up picking the architect in which provided what we felt was the best bang for the buck. They have experience in ice arenas. They were able to work within our budget and are working within our timelines, which is extremely tight.
And is that architect that you're working with separate and independent from the one for the expansion?
So as we've dove into this project, one of the things that we've identified is the roof structure itself, while upgraded when the partial roof collapse occurred, that was upgraded in a fashion that the roof structure would meet code. However, the structure holding up the roof does not meet code. So we looked at a series of options to bring this up to code, which would have been increasing the size of the superstructure welding, and it was essentially determined that it couldn't be done. So right now, the proposal is coming in front of you basically for a teardown and reconstruction of a new superstructure and building around the Pop Whalen facility.
Thank you. That's all for the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to give us any public input? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item is the bulk vote. Board members, does anybody have any questions and concerns in the bulk vote? I do want to point out that we had the 2021 Equalization Municipal Assessment Data Certificate, and I want to point out that in 2019, our indicated ratio was 86.2, and our mean weight was 86.2. We reevaluated. It was at 92.3, and today it is at 75.8. So our, our property, our assessments are lower than what the real estate is selling for. Only reason I point this out is the state could come back and ask us to reevaluate sooner than five years in 2025. Does anybody else have any comments or questions regarding the bulk vote? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the bulk vote. Items A through F.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on. We have no board or committee appointments. We're now under new business. New business one is appointment by Robert Moll, all in about Center Street sidewalk. Come on up to the microphone.
Thank you. I will, I'll be brief. Want to cover an area, I'm going to cover that sidewalk, but I want to just put out this thing that I'm trying to do tonight, is public safety. I think public safety, everybody thinks, well, we got a police department, we got a fire department that covers public safety. Doesn't. Public safety, all of ours is responsible. And I think we're not doing everything we could do that comes to public safety. That said, crosswalk, Cotton Valley Trail. Brought this up. There's a couple of selectmen here that know this, and the town manager. You cannot see, when you're coming out of town and heading towards Osiphe, you cannot see a pedestrian coming. And if they just walk out on that road, it's just a matter of time. Someone gets here. There are no signs. There's nothing. There is a stop sign. I think the town fixed the stop sign after that accident, which I understand was, you know, had something to do with something else. But nonetheless, you cannot see a pedestrian coming out of town at that crosswalk. And I'll give you another example. Yesterday, what I do for a job every day, I drive all through town. I see all kinds of things, and I'm sure most of us do if we drive through town. I had a pedestrian walk right out in that crosswalk, never looked, just kept going. And there's nothing we can do about that. I get that. But I think that crosswalk at the Seabird, at the Cotton Valley Trail, which was, is heavily used most of the year, when it's, and it's not being walked on, it's probably being snow machines on it. So I think we have to try to do something. That's why I'm here tonight. I think we need to do something, whether it's signage, a flashy light. I know that stuff costs money, and I don't like to spend money either. I think we all try to keep a close to the vest, but I think that it's a public safety issue that needs to be addressed. It's a busy road. 1098 comes off of there. You got all those people coming into town, out of town. I just would like to see something done about that crosswalk. And, and what to do, I don't know. I, your guesses are as good as mine, but something, at least something that lets them know, we can't see you.
I did hear you at the Budget Committee, and I did take what you said very seriously. So I went down, took some pictures. And the state had gone through there not too long ago. They eliminated one of the crosswalks. But there are signs, pedestrians, behind that building is the stop sign. So that building, in front of that building is the sidewalk, and then there is the shoulder. So there is some distance there to see. And that this sign is what the state put in, wanted us to put in, and it's, you can see it both ways on both sides. And I did see the stop sign. I'm not quite sure what else we can do. It's kind of like the person who walked out with you that, so I'll give you these in terms of the signage. I think, I don't know what other sign other than us putting a blinking light there, and I'm not sure somebody who isn't going to pay attention as you saw just
Oh, sure.
go right on out. So, but I did take you serious. I, I think we're all concerned about public safety in this town. Brian?
Yeah, I, I had a long conversation with Chief Rondo about this, and I asked him, give me some history of the crosswalk on Cotton Valley, right by the Seabird. And he said that in all his years being there, he has only known of one pedestrian that has been hit by a car. He knows of other accidents where cars have had collisions, maybe stopping, he said, for someone coming out of the crosswalk, but he doesn't know of any fatalities or any serious car accidents in that location. He does believe that, like any crosswalk in town, it is a problem area. A lot of the people use the crosswalks, a lot of people don't use the crosswalks. I had an instance where we have the tall signs that show a little child or something. So I had a little child come out from behind one of those signs in front of me. He was hiding behind it in the street. We had a signage up to protect him, and he was, he was kind of playing behind it. And luckily, I was going slow in downtown, and he ran out in front of me. And then his parents gave him Holy Hand Basket for it. But the chief didn't seem to think that there was much else other than a blinking light, which is an $80,000 expense, and we don't know how we would have to fund that.
Brad?
Yeah, just kind of thinking here a little bit. I don't know if, I don't recall we've ever put one out there, but we have those portable, the yellow crosswalk signs that the, that our Public Works Bar puts out on the yellow line at the crosswalks and stuff. Would that be a good location to set one up, you know, during, obviously summertime? Can't put it out there in the wintertime, but that at least bring a little more awareness to people that are approaching it. Trying to think of something that could be done fairly quickly.
Are you talking to the thing that's in the middle of the road?
Right.
Which says, yeah. I mean, we could definitely put one of those during the summertime.
Could ask if they have another one there they could put out.
We could ask them to get one to put out there. That is something we could put out.
I think something, you know. I can tell you, to Brian's point, the chief may not, but there's a state trooper that would tell you likewise, to tell you something completely different, because I've seen him standing there in the summer, and you might not see him anymore because now he's a detective. But Mr. Corbly, who lives on Wet Neck, stands out there.
I know Kempis, I know Kempis very well.
He stands out there, and he watches, because it is a problem, so.
You know, I think that that's a good solution. That's the best we can do, and we could look at another year trying to get 80,000 in the budget for a, and I'll look at you.
Well, no, I mean, and I get it.
No, I'm just kidding.
We're all close. We all like to save money, but I think you invite thousands of people into town a year. I brought this up, too. And we do have some kind of obligation to for public safety, especially when you're doing that, so.
I think Luke has a question.
This might be for Dave Ford question, but I know we used to do not only the sign, but at some point, we were painting the crosswalks red, I believe, some locations. That could be a good location because it's a trail, and it is heavily used. If that sidewalk in the middle of the white lines was painted a different color, I don't know if that still can be done, or if it's a, if it's a town thing or a state thing on a state highway. I don't know if that would be permissible, but that could also add some visibility to that, that spot to denote it as not only a crosswalk, but if it was red or some different color than the road with the little sign that waves back and forth in the middle.
I've had people go through my bus lights.
I know. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, it's the pedestrian needs to look. It's a busy road, and they have a stop sign, they have a sidewalk, and before they're out in the road. And so just as the person came out behind the car, we can add all these other things, but I think we're still going to have people just walk out and not.
Yeah, the unfortunate, this unfortunate incident happened to be that the person was from a country that drove on the left side of the road. So they looked right for traffic, not left for traffic. It was human nature. If they had looked left, they would have probably seen the car and stopped their bicycle. But they went out right onto the road the way they would in their home country.
Thank you for coming and bringing it up. I, we enjoy hearing from the public, and you've brought up some good points, and we'll see if we can do some things there for you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is the municipal electric rate study, and we're going to see if we can get this up on the screen.
Okay, so we've just been advised that we have no audio that's going out to the We think we're good. We, everybody's texting me that nobody can hear the meeting at home, so, as well as I have Mayhew standing by. Is he, is he able to join, Jim? So he's there. We are going to have the echo problem, so I'm not sure what's, no.
I can, I can hear now.
Okay. I just, I think we're going to have to deal with the echo.
Okay.
It is what it is. Good evening. As many of you know, I think all of you know, we are entering our new purchase power contract commencing in January of this year. We went out to bid earlier than normal. Typically, when we, when we enter into a new purchase power contract, I like to do a rate evaluation and analysis after the fact to make sure that our current rates are performing the way we need them and anticipate them to. So once again, we reached out to Mayhew Seavey from PLM to do our five-year rate analysis. I have Mayhew here virtually to go through a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not quite sure how this is going to work, but are you there, Mayhew? Yes, I can. So you're good? You get to go?
I don't have the.
Okay, I guess we don't have, we don't have necessarily the, the slide presentation up or the ability to show that, but perhaps we could at least talk our way through it? If you can share yours, that'd be great. Yes. Yep.
Okay. I, 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 Yeah, I'd be glad to do that, I think January would be a great time to do that, and we'll start the year fresh with that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mayhew.
Okay, Wolf, the town of Wolfboro ambulance contract, and I'll turn that over to you, Jim.
I believe we gotta do the Abenaki.
Oh, I checked that, yep, sorry, Abenaki first, and I'll still turn that over to you, and you can.
And I'll turn it over to Christine, Christine's worked on an operational plan relative to COVID this season with Abenaki, Christine?
Yes, as we're getting ready to open Abenaki, we just wanted to update our plans, so the one thing that we feel is important is just keeping the lodge still closed, we're gonna utilize it this year for rentals, so we didn't have rentals last year, but this year we are gonna have rentals, so our plan is, because that rental room is so tiny, and having people in there, we're gonna have people come in from the outside, and set up a little corral, so to speak, and then we'll have them fill out their paperwork, do the rentals, the person can come out and fit them, so there's more room there. We're also gonna still do concessions through the windows like we did last year, and then that way it will just keep our staff, where they have a break room as well, and still keep them safe. Most ski areas are doing that as well, keeping their lodges closed, just because space and having room in there, so we feel like that's really the only thing we're going to keep want for a COVID protocol, except for the fact that when they do come into the building, just have a mask available if they are being measured, when they do the rentals, they have to measure them, so if they have face-to-face contact, we just want them to wear a mask.
And are you gonna do that when the people come in, use the bathroom, are you requiring into the building or not?
No, like, they can still come in, that would just be, just have a mask if they're face-to-face, because sometimes they are in their face measuring them.
And my understanding is that you, anybody, we're gonna have Wolfboro and non-Wolfboro, you're not gonna have to sign up for times, it'll go back to exactly the way it was, except for the lodge.
Correct, yep.
Luke?
And here it's on page whatever, it says, staff and customer health, patrons two and older will be required to wear face covering, which is a cloth or disposable mask to help protect against the spread of the virus when indoors, I.
We can edit that out.
Yeah, I thought we covered that when we covered the rink, that it would be highly suggested or encouraged, but, and, I guess that, I mean, I have, I have a little bit of an issue with the fact that the, that it's gonna be closed to the public, you know, if a parent wants to come wait for their kid inside while they're skiing, it's gonna be completely closed, I feel like, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be dealing COVID for a very long time, and, just to have, that lodge is a great resource for the town, it's a great resource for Abenaki, I just hope that this will be the last year that it's closed, and, you know, I'd like, I personally think that with protocols in place, we could keep the lodge open for small numbers of people, and limit it to small numbers of people, but if, you know, the rest of the board decides that they want to keep it closed for another year, I'm okay with that.
Board members, anybody else have any comments? I mean, the lodge is lovely, but when I went over and taking my grandsons, it's packed, you're, you know, and people are sitting at tables eating, I mean, there's no space now, whether you could eliminate it, eliminate some spacing, or put a cap on how many can get in there, I stood a lot outside last year watching my grandkids, and, you know, I would have preferred to be inside, but it didn't stop us from going there, only other way I can see us doing it is, you definitely have to limit the number who could get in there, and whether that would be more staff.
Right, right, so, I mean, I think start off with this in place, but if there is an opportunity that we can manage and have less amount of people in there, it's something we're definitely willing to look at, I just can't promise it right now, just because of my staffing situation, so.
Are there outside heaters there?
There are not.
Option.
I mean, you come, you better have enough clothes on, is my feeling, I guess I'm, I think that we should try to move towards, if we can, opening it and limiting the number as you have staff, I think, you know, I'm comfortable with that approach, anybody else have any comments, or why they would like to see?
Would that, would you be worried about your staff if there were people in there?
I think I would definitely just have to section off an area, I think it could be doable, my concern is that very first week is like 11 to 7 every day with full staff in there, so I just don't know if I would have the manpower to do that, so, I think it's something we can work towards, I think that first week might be rough, because it's just so many people, but I think after that, our numbers are pretty low, like, during the week, that we might be able to accommodate.
Look at it, see if it's possible, I think that's what we're saying, I agree.
And then we'll just limit how many people and make sure we're transitioning out.
Yeah, and if it's possible, and if we are, it isn't, then it isn't, but I think that, I think we do want to start moving towards as normal as we can be.
So, yeah, just common sense approach, maybe after the holidays is when you start, and during vacation week, you have to go back to being a little bit stricter, because you know how busy it gets.
Right, right.
Anybody else, any comment? Okay, can I have a motion from somebody to accept the protocols, COVID 19, health and safety protocols for 2021, 22 season?
Move to approve the 2021, 2022 COVID-19 plan for the Abenaki ski area.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're all set, now we can move on to the ambulance contract.
So, in front of you, you will have a updated ambulance contract, which is continuation with Stewart's Ambulance for another two years, the only real change in the contract is the pricing model, which the pricing model is exactly what it's been historically, CIP for the Northeast region, or 3% max, and the other slight change in it is, they did request, they being Stewart's Ambulance requested, that if they were doing a local transfer, in other words, from Huggins Hospital to a facility in Wolfboro, they just requested not to have to shift an ambulance around, we felt that the timeframe that that took was acceptable, the chief worked with Stewart's on completing this, and we feel it's a good contract, and, and we should maintain it for the next two years.
Jim, do you want to just give the highlights, because there are people at home, you know, with the two ambulances, what it is, because some of, there's been concern about that, and the amount of time they need to get on?
So, there's two ambulances that are housed in the town of Wolfboro, one is at the paramedic level, the other one would be backed up at the advanced level, which just gives a different level of care, they, they work through the state protocols, those two ambulances are garaged in the town of Wolfboro per the contract, and they respond in conjunction with the fire department to all medical emergencies and fire emergencies in the town, they are dispatched through local, central dispatch here in Wolfboro, and we do have some penalty clauses associated with this, that if, if it takes too long for them to get on and respond, or they can't meet the obligations, we can issue a penalty monthly, this has not been an issue, which is a good thing for the ambulance service going forward, it also gives us the ability to look at their books anytime we want to, to, if in the future the town wants to consider looking at ambulance services, we could look at those books to be able to do a cost benefit of the existing service compared to taking it on in-house, this is a, a good contract, and it holds them accountable, and they, they do a really good job for the town, but they, they are permitted to shift their ambulances around, and, you know, they're in the business to try and make money and pay their employees, and we think we've struck a good balance of them being able to shift their ambulances around, maintain coverage to the town, and move ambulances in as needed.
Thank you, does any board members have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, can I have a motion to sign the, and accept the contract, and sign it?
Make a motion to approve the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to approve and sign ambulance contract, service contract with Stewart's Ambulance Service effective January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're all set, now we can move on to the ambulance contract.
So, in front of you, you will have a updated ambulance contract, which is continuation with Stewart's Ambulance for another two years, the only real change in the contract is the pricing model, which the pricing model is exactly what it's been historically, CIP for the Northeast region, or 3% max, and the other slight change in it is, they did request, they being Stewart's Ambulance requested, that if they were doing a local transfer, in other words, from Huggins Hospital to a facility in Wolfboro, they just requested not to have to shift an ambulance around, we felt that the timeframe that that took was acceptable, the chief worked with Stewart's on completing this, and we feel it's a good contract, and, and we should maintain it for the next two years.
Jim, do you want to just give the highlights, because there are people at home, you know, with the two ambulances, what it is, because some of, there's been concern about that, and the amount of time they need to get on?
So, there's two ambulances that are housed in the town of Wolfboro, one is at the paramedic level, the other one would be backed up at the advanced level, which just gives a different level of care, they, they work through the state protocols, those two ambulances are garaged in the town of Wolfboro per the contract, and they respond in conjunction with the fire department to all medical emergencies and fire emergencies in the town, they are dispatched through local, central dispatch here in Wolfboro, and we do have some penalty clauses associated with this, that if, if it takes too long for them to get on and respond, or they can't meet the obligations, we can issue a penalty monthly, this has not been an issue, which is a good thing for the ambulance service going forward, it also gives us the ability to look at their books anytime we want to, to, if in the future the town wants to consider looking at ambulance services, we could look at those books to be able to do a cost benefit of the existing service compared to taking it on in-house, this is a, a good contract, and it holds them accountable, and they, they do a really good job for the town, but they, they are permitted to shift their ambulances around, and, you know, they're in the business to try and make money and pay their employees, and we think we've struck a good balance of them being able to shift their ambulances around, maintain coverage to the town, and move ambulances in as needed.
Thank you, does any board members have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, can I have a motion to sign the, and accept the contract, and sign it?
Make a motion to approve the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to approve and sign ambulance contract, service contract with Stewart's Ambulance Service effective January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, request capital reserve funds dockside parking lot.
Dave's here to speak on this, we had a stakeholders meeting, which we got some feedback from, and we want to be able to continue to work on this project, based on some conceptual plans, to get some more engineered type of plans, Dave?
Yes, I think, talked about it at the dockside committee level, and said the next step was to further the conceptual plans with input, we had some good input, and wanted to change some things around the angle of parking, and making sure, kind of resolve some of the issues, and the big one is the underground electric, and where that would be located, so this is the scope of work that we developed last year, and I think it pretty much meets the requirements, I had asked them to update it, and get this reissued without a, a updated scope, and I did meet with them last week, so they understand what we're up against, so I, at this point, we need to get the Board of Selectmen to approve, so we can move forward, and that's what we're looking for tonight.
Dave, I have a question, in this it says, task three, and it says, holding two stakeholders meeting, are you still looking at that? I found it hard, because this was an old one, and, and that's what it says, are you, once you get the designs, are you looking to hold two stakeholders meetings to look at those designs, or have we moved past that?
No, I think we committed to have at least one more meeting with the committee.
I see this as a stakeholder, I would, to me, this would be a public forum.
And then, a public forum, so, what I was thinking, two meetings meant one more, so we, make sure they got the feedback properly, so you get to see it first, the Board of Selectmen or the committee, and then you say, okay, let's go look at it, and that would be then for the planning board type of plans.
Okay, so we're gonna have a, we'll get, and we're getting, gonna get one or two plans?
No.
Concept design, or are we coming out with one?
We're gonna have the alternatives we talked about, crosswalk locations, the elimination of parking, the potential to save a parking place here, and I'll give it up for a pedestrian space, so what we have talked about, the idea that concepts would have those alternatives.
Okay.
But, once we have, so we have the first meeting, we're gonna get, kind of solidify that design, so then we can go to.
With, with one design, okay, because I know Ryan talked about having some parking spaces with, for motorcycles, we talked about closing the parking on one side, going out, so, you, we're gonna get back two options in terms of addressing that before, before we decide on a final, I just want to make sure we're getting all the input in, that's what I'm.
No, no, and I think there's the other options dealing with the pedestrian traffic in and out of the travelways.
Yep.
Where the crosswalks would link across the street.
Yep.
So, those bigger issues would come, you know, so we're gonna have to have a bigger plan showing that connection, there's gonna be a lighting plan where the lights are gonna go, the underground electric is most important, that's what we think we need to get, you know, the parking, pedestrian space, the transition from the parking to the dock area that's under construction now, and making sure we have that transition to make it.
And we have the right, I think there was some concern about the right angle, still backing into the ramp, and where the cars go to do that?
Well, I think everyone said that the angle parking would be better, so we're gonna, you know, go angle parking, and I think the boat, trailer traffic, the way it's shown, I think the key was, as is nosing, or getting their nose corrected, those parking spaces as you're exiting on the left-hand side, at least the first one or two would want to go, so that trucks with a long trailer could negotiate.
So that's, that's gonna be, you've got that, okay, any other concerns from other board members?
So what, explain the timeline again, so, you're gonna put all the input that you've had from the committee and from the Board of Selectmen together on a large plan, then you're going to, to the committee, or to the committee with the members that have buildings, all that, those participants, and we're gonna talk about that one more time, and then you're bringing it to public forum at a Board of Selectmen meeting?
I think the next level would be, we're now focusing in on the final design, it's more for public information, because the first meeting is where the stakeholders, and they're gonna have the input, the final meeting is like a planning board, a public hearing, to make sure everyone is, you know, knows what's happening, what they're gonna be voting on, or, as we continue, because the money's gonna go up a little bit, obviously the construction costs are going up by the time we get to a 23.
Can you come back with a new scope of work if we okay it, because we know we've got some issues with the thing, that, that I think that's one, the defining of the meeting and, and how it goes? Is that what, because this, this is gonna, there're gonna be changes to this, am I correct? You're looking at, when you're saying that you needed, they were gonna revise the scope?
Because some of the dates didn't make sense, you know, they're saying, we're gonna do a certain thing by a certain time, well, we haven't even approved it yet, so those dates are gonna change a little bit, the issue of, we've talked about it, so the updates, yeah, we can do that update, but. You know, they're saying we're going to do a certain thing by a certain time, well, we haven't even approved it yet, so those dates are going to change a little bit. The issue of, we've talked about it, so the updates, yeah, we can do that update, but the hope was that we could get this formal approval and...
I'm okay giving the formal approval. I just want to know exactly, and I don't know where other, that we have something in writing, exactly how we're going to go forward with this. That's, you know, I find it hard to do it on something that has wrong dates and not 100% sure, but if we get an up, I'm comfortable if you get me an updated form to go forward. Does anybody else have any comments? Dave, Brad? Luke?
No, I'm good. I think, you know, I'm good.
Okay.
So what would, what would be, what would you like to see, Lynda?
I just want this to come back, correct dates, clear definition of meetings, just so we have something in writing what we're going to do this coming year. And I thought you said they were going to do that for you anyhow.
Correct. They must get busy. I was hoping to have an updated one tonight. I don't have it, so that shouldn't be a too big a deal.
No.
But we're going to, that way we can more specifically address what Lynda talked about, with the issues we talked about last week, and put that in writing, and the issue about the public meeting. One will be a stakeholders' meeting, which we will get input on the conceptual level, but then the second one would be more like a public hearing for a planning board level type of drawings at that point.
Yep.
At the end of that process, we'll have cost estimates, and hopefully we'll have buy-in. That will then get us to the next year, whenever we decide to go to construction. This is not bidding documents, very close to it, but until we're ready to bid, you know, we're not sure if it's going to be twenty-three or twenty-four, because we still...
And I'm okay with you getting that new piece of paper.
One of the key, I think, for the public, too, is to understand, one of the big pushes is, is to get the concept and the layout approved, because next year we do want to begin the underground electric, to work with our stakeholders and the neighbors there. They're spending lots of money on their buildings, and they would like to get the electric brought up to code. We have some illegal issues up there, and everyone wants to get that corrected. It will require us, a major electric, and we'll be working with Barry and the Minnesota Electric Department, and it's going to have an impact, and we're going to try to mitigate that impact, and that's what we'll be talking about at those next levels. And also will include a drainage plan, so stormwater treatment. We talked about what opportunities we have there, and there'll be a landscaping plan, where we're not going to go crazy with landscaping, no big trees, but we're going to have certain areas where we can have planters, seasonal flowers. And a lighting plan, most important, too, is a lighting plan, how we're going to light it, because we have the old lights, trying to keep them, they're out of style now, so we've got to get a whole new lighting plan, because we are going to take away the big lights that are up on the poles. This is going to create a different type of lighting, so we are going to have to do that.
And so that'll be, that'll be in the new...
Well, it's all there now, but we'll try to get it more clear.
Yeah, I just, so it is, that's just where I am. I'm fine with that, and we get the, I think we have to do the electric and get that...
That's key to get that going.
Yeah.
And the hope is, we will not probably have this ready for presentation, you know, at town meeting, where a town meeting is a cap reserve, so it's really not a big push. So I don't see us trying, we have so much on that warrant. I think this one should be downplayed, and when we have the public meetings, we'll have the discussion, and of course, when we get closer to a construction, then it'll be a bigger presentation at the town meeting, so. And we are behind schedule now, because it's already beginning into the holidays, so they won't be able to start until January now, so that schedule has to be updated, and that's one of the things we get correct.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Oh, come on, somebody.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase order for $41,000, authorize the fund out of the Capital Reserve Fund for the work on the design for the Dockside Parking Lot.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have another one, David.
So Dave's going to talk about a request for replacement of a dump truck. We're running into an issue with inventory, being able to find vehicles. He was able to find a two thousand and eighteen that's basically equipped, ready to go, and Brad Harriman accompanied the staff to look at the vehicle. Dave?
Yes. Normally, we'd like to do is follow the plan, which each year at town meeting, we say, okay, this is the plan, we're going to buy trucks, and this is the money we're asking to put in, and what we're, where we have the spending plan is. So this year, we, and we know we go out to bid, so we're trying to go out to bid, and all the dealers are telling us, there's nothing out here to bid. The new trucks are backlogged, and that even one of the suppliers, you normally have to buy a truck, you know, say from a Liberty, a truck dealer, and then you have it set up by a company like Sleeper or Donovan. Donovan's telling us that they have something like an incredible amount of equipment to set trucks up, because based on the orders that were placed six months ago, they're not receiving the trucks potentially not for another year and longer. So the idea of, the old way we used to bid a truck and have it ordered, it's really messed up for a year, so that supply chain has hurt the truck business. So we couldn't find the one and a half ton truck that we had talked about buying, and we couldn't find anyone who would bid on a HD twelve or three-quarter or one-ton truck. The only thing was, here's a truck, if you want, you can buy it now, but it's going to be gone tomorrow. And the other issue is, the trucks they're building are all more person, four-door trucks, so that's where the money is, and that's where they're focusing their trucks selling off. So that puts us in a pickle. The guys were out looking hard, and they found this dump truck, which I was worried, how come it's still on the market? Why did this happen? And back in eighteen, they ordered a manual transmission, and most municipalities are going to automatics, as we are, too. We made automatics. But to my surprise, the guys liked the manuals better. So when they found this truck, they said, oh, great, and it actually is a match to our, we have the International model like here, so it kind of fits our fleet, and they say it's a hell of a deal. So what we're saying, and we didn't get as much on the trade as they hoped, but again, it was one forty-seven, I think it was, with the, and ten thousand for the trade.
One hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. And is there, and so, and then with the trade, is it...
The trade is going to reduce that amount by ten thousand, and we hadn't got that by the time I wrote this letter, I think, that's why that wasn't in the memo. That just came in.
Okay.
The...
What's the final cost?
The final cost will be one thirty-seven, two seventy-three. There may be some other incidentals that come with it, but at this point, the price we see there was one forty-seven, and then that was reduced by the trade in value, which was $10,000. The comparison, the closest comparison we could find was a truck that was worth one hundred and seventy thousand. It was not this model, it's the new model that International's making. They said, well, quote, this is a quote, but we can't guarantee it, and it probably won't be made until 2023. That's not even set up. Then we go to the setup people, and they're saying, well, we used to set up the trucks for, say, forty, fifty thousand dollars. They're saying now the price is out of the world. I can't even repeat what they're saying. So it's doubling in cost, if not more. We got a real problem with the market and the way it's choked now, so I think our issue is going to be, we found this deal, great deal, and I wanted to bring Brad in on it, because it was unusual for us to make the request this time of year. If we're, or go, we can, our truck's ready to be traded in, this deal can happen this weekend, this week, actually, and that's what we're hoping to do. So a lot of talking, I, we won't happen to answer any questions.
Brad, do you want to kind of...
Yeah, I did, you know, on Dave's request, I went over the specs of the truck, went down and looked at it with the crew on Monday. Just to really keep in mind, you know, with people here that were looking at a two thousand and eighteen, you need to keep in mind that it's still a brand-new truck, just never sold, sitting on the lot there. So it is a brand-new truck. When we went down to look at it, the company that set up the truck with the dump body, the plow frames, the plows and all that stuff, the equipment on it, was there to go over it with us. It's a company that the town's used for years anyway, Vikings High, to set up the trucks that we have now. And Tim down there from that company did say, you know, he showed us the, in fact, I don't know if it's in here, I think it might have been in there, that what the cost of that portion of it was, I think it was $67,000 for the setup of it in two thousand and eighteen. Well, if we ordered the truck, as Dave pointed out, you're going to pay a lot more for the truck, wait over a year for it, and that exact same equipment package setup is going to be about $85,000 in today's dollars. So it's a, it's a real good deal. We're lucky to find this, this truck. Gets us out of a predicament of getting a twenty-year-old truck that's questionable, whether, how dependable it's going to be for the next, we'd have to keep it going for two more years if we went the route to order one and wait for it to come in. So in my mind, this is really a no-brainer to purchase this truck. We have the money in the Capital Reserve Fund for it. I strongly recommend that the board, you know, support this and authorize it.
I just have one question. It's a four-by-two?
Yes.
Is that, I don't understand large plow trucks. Is that an issue?
No.
Okay.
What it is, what's good about this is, it has what they call a live body, the dump truck body, so it distributes the sand and the salt in front of the rear tires. So you're actually seeing, you're not, your tires are driving on the standard portion of the road already, so that's, that's huge.
My brain just naturally said four-by-four for traction and this and that, and I saw four-by-two when I was reading it. And eight hundred and eighteen miles, that's it, right?
I was not sure what it had on it.
Yeah, it's still got the plastic on the seat, so it's been, it just drove between dealerships, and then they decided to set it up.
And stuff like that, yeah. That's amazing.
Yeah, we got lucky.
It's a time capsule right now. So as long as four-by-two was okay, I'm all in.
Brad, do you have a motion?
I do. I would, we have something written out here. I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure of $137,273 out of the Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of this two thousand and eighteen International Truck from Liberty International.
Do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Guys, appreciate it, too.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our winner distribution of the Josiah Brown scholarships.
So we had two applicants for the Josiah Brown Scholarship. We are in very good position with this fund. We're recommending that we award both students with a $2,500 award.
Okay, board members, do you, does anybody have any questions, concerns? Somebody want to make a motion?
Move to grant Josiah Brown scholarships to Chase Bailey and Caitlin Folsom in the amount of $2,500 each.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I really would like us to get on our calendar, and I'm willing to work on it, maybe another member of the board. We really need to look at the qualifications for this scholarship, because we only had two apply, and we really need to do something about it. So I'm willing to work on it. Is there another selectman willing to work on it?
I will.
Okay, Ryan, we'll, we'll see if we can get down and look at that. All righty, next item on the agenda is the rules of procedures. A new set was sent out Monday. We had opinions from town attorney. I made what are the adjustments that he recommended, and does any board member have any questions or concern? We're putting in a new H, and this talks about how we, oh, I can read it. "The town manager is the person who approves the board, by the Board of Selectmen to manage and oversee all requests for legal opinion from town attorney on town matters unless the Board of Selectmen votes to approve a selectman to request an opinion. Should a selectman want a legal opinion that, from town attorney on a town matter, the selectman should make a request to the town manager. The town manager shall either, A, send an email to the town attorney stating the question being asked, or bring the legal opinion request to the full board for its approval at the next meeting. A town matter is defined as any subject under consideration by the board or any matter within the authority or jurisdiction of the board." Does anybody have any, we've, we've talked about this in another meeting, we've worked on the wording. Does anybody have any concerns or questions?
I have one.
Sure.
It says that the town manager should either, A, send an email to the town attorney stating the question being asked, or B, bring the legal opinion request to the full board. So our town manager can't call the town attorney?
I think what we are looking for, he can call it on a, on a matter, just to talk to him, but if we're going to get a legal opinion, we should have the question asked in writing and...
In an email only.
And we have a written answer, so we all know what was asked, and we all know what the answer is. He can have any kind of conversations he wants with town attorney, but if he's getting a legal opinion for the board.
You want it in an email form?
I want it, yep. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve our revised rules of procedure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay. We're moving on to warrant article discussion.
Okay, so we've had a number of our articles reviewed by legal counsel. You have a number of documents in here. We will go through the, each article. You will as well find in here an Excel spreadsheet, which breaks down the current warrant article costs right now. The cash warrant articles is eighty-six cents. Last year, the cash warrant article requests were ninety-six cents. You also will find the breakdown of the unassigned fund balance and where we're at today, Capital Reserve documents, where we're at, and then you'll find a series of draft bond schedules for your review. They're kind of small to read on your print, so we printed out the larger ones for your review, and we'll try to go through this. Apologize for the technical issues. The thing worked wonderfully today, but for some reason, it's not working well this evening. So the first warrant article is the electric power reconstruction of Turtle Island Road. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $270,000 for the purpose of reconstructing the overhead electrical distribution system on Turtle Island Tap, which includes the areas of Camp Road, Lady Frances Drive, Wishinwell Lane, and Governor Shores Road. The amount of $270,000 shall be funded from the Electrical Enterprise Fund surplus. This expenditure will not result in any increase in the tax rate, and this has been amended minorly by the, by legal counsel.
Does any board members have any questions or concerns about that warrant article? Okay, let's go on to the next one, which is O.
So this one reflects the, the language that came forward by the library trustees, to see if the, to see whether the town will vote to authorize the Wolfboro Public Library Board of Trustees to expend a sum not to exceed $250,000 for the purpose of constructing and installation of design landscaping plan on the property surrounding the library building. Said sum to be taken from donations and grants, and it will not have any impact on the tax rate. Been approved by legal counsel and zero impact on the tax rate.
And this has changed from the last time we saw it, because we had the selectmen in there, and it is correct, the board of trustees.
Correct.
Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Page three. We've changed the title to reflect the request. Townwide Historic Resources Study, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 for the purpose of hiring a preservation consultant to carry out a townwide historic resources survey that will serve as a foundation for future efforts to complete its character, historic character, and help manage growth and change. Completing this survey is identified as a high priority in the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Chapter of the master plan, and is one of the primary purposes of the Heritage Commission. This survey will provide an overview of the community, including its geographic history, architecture, patterns of development, and important themes in its history. It will contain an extensive bibliography, maps, and listing of potential and already identified historic resources. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32.7, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December thirty-one, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact is one cent per thousand dollars of assessed valuation, and it's been approved by legal counsel.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
Conservation easement, to see if the town will vote to place a conservation easement on the town-owned portion of Whiteface Mountain Tax Map, 37.7 and 37.8. See deed record at Book 3561, page 196, with said easement to be held by the Lakes Region Conservation Trust. No tax rate impact, and this has been amended by legal counsel.
Any board members have any issues or concerns? Okay, and the next one?
Next one is Bridge Falls Path Lighting Replacement, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the electrical system to include underground conduit, lamp posts, and lighting fixtures along Bridge Falls Path, which run from Foss Field to Center Street. The funding for this project shall be paid from, paid for by transferring up to forty-two thousand dollars from the existing Bridge Falls Capital Reserve Fund and raising a hundred and ten thousand by general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA thirty-two-seven, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Tax rate, estimated tax rate impact, nine cents per thousand of assessed valuation, and this has been amended by legal counsel.
Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be placed in the existing Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of Trustees of Trust Fund with the board of selectmen designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Tax rate, estimated tax rate impact, one cent per thousand of assessed valuation, approved by legal counsel.
Yes, before we do the next one, I'm going to step down. I fill the board of selectmen's position on the Friends of Pop Whalen, and I've been fundraising so, with them, so I have a conflict of interest.
So this particular warrant article in your packet tonight, you should have some draft documents of the design of the building. This is a very fluid project at this point. We are looking at a partnership with the Friends of Pop Whalen. Mr. Vice Chairman, with your permission, they may want to speak on behalf of this, but you should have some drawings in front of you. Our hopes are that very early in January, we will have the pricing. We've got a couple of dates proposed for bond hearings, which we will work through, but I will go ahead and read the warrant article and give you a little bit more information from that point. Pop Whalen Renovation and Expansion Project, the bond, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four-point-seven million dollars for the purpose of structural replacement, expansion, renovations, and equipment replacement at the Pop Whalen Ice Arena. Further, to authorize the issuance of not more than two million in bonds or notes for the purpose, for this purpose, in accordance with provisions of RSA thirty-three, the Municipal Finance Act, at least two-point-seven million in donations from the Friends of Pop Whalen, to further authorize the board of selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply, or obtain, and accept federal, state, and other aid grants or donations, if any, which may be available for said project, and that may reduce the amount to bond, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take any action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. We, we had a long conversation today with bond counsel relative to this. We will have to be putting together a, a series of documents for the, the bond, because there is revenue that is established through that, that facility. The numbers right now are estimates, they're pretty solid estimates, which we will have a much better handle on. We're hopeful the first week in January, based on these construction drawings, which still have got some more work to be done to them, but it gives you a, a pretty good handle on it. We have two options for bonds, which are, are in your packet. The, the first one, we, we laid out the full, full, four-point-seven million over a twenty-year period, which shows a seventeen-cent tax rate impact in year one, and on the final year is a ten-cent tax rate impact, and that's estimated at two-point-five percent. The other option is the two million dollars, based on a two-point-five percent interest. That's seven years, seven cents per thousand in the first year, and goes down. With that said, there's, like I said, there's, there's a lot more work that's got to be done to this project. It's very fluid, and can answer any questions you have, and I believe that a couple of the friends may want to speak on its behalf based on what they're doing on their fundraising end.
Who's going to talk? Any one of you guys? Eric?
Just put him in the chair, Kurt. So, hi, I'm Kurt DeBilder. I am on the Board of Directors for the Friends of Pop Whalen, and I think that we obviously are in support of this, the spirit of this, but also the language, as it has been proposed. What we are doing is raising that two-point-seven figure. We are well on our way. We have, what's the total committed at this point, Tom?
Hi, Tom Roberts, I'm on the board, and I'm the treasurer of Friends of Pop Whalen. Our donations to date are both cash donations and pledges. We're at one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars right now, out of the two-point-seven that we're looking to raise. And our fundraising efforts, really, the majority of them kicked off just about a month or two ago, so we're, we're still in the early stages of the fundraising, but we've had good support to start off with.
And what that means is that despite only being at the very infancy of the fundraising effort, we have already achieved a great deal of our goals. So the expectation is, based on our conversations, our contacts, and our projections, that we should have no difficulty meeting, if not exceeding, that two-point-seven figure. So we're in great shape.
Brian?
So I have a question. Would it be possible to set up some type of website for the public? This is a big project, and it's something that I think it would get you more exposure. I think it would be a positive for the town to see the steps as we go along a little bit more, and maybe get any donations too, people that would give small donations or something. But it'd be, this is going to be such a big part of the community, and you guys are doing such a great thing. I'd like to see it out there where people can see it as it, as it morphs.
So there is a website.
Cool.
Not only is it possible, but it's done. The website is Friend, excuse me, it's popwhalen.org, so you can search Friends of Pop Whalen. Popwhalen.org has a bunch of different sub menu, menus and submenus where you can see what's going on with the project. All of these materials that I've brought with me here are available on the website. There is a donate page that you can click on the button and make a donation that way as well.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're, I, we're in good shape.
Yeah, Brian, the more we can get this out to the public, the better.
We do.
Certainly think if we have this kind of a project, which we've had with other Friends of Abenaki and so forth, you know, to get a four-point-seven million dollar project for two million dollars, to me, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm glad that you feel that way, Dave. I, I think that, you know, we, as community members, all are going to benefit greatly from this project, not just because of the incredible financials that are involved from the town, what I would think would be incredibly beneficial financial from the town's perspective in terms of what we are donating to this, but also because what this is really going to do is turn this into a four-season multi-use facility. And that's going to not just benefit, right now, it's a hockey rink, basically, and what it turns into is a half acre, twenty thousand square feet on a concrete pad that can be used for anything in a climate-controlled facility. So it's going to enable the, from its present use, it's going to enable things like hockey tournaments to occur there, which can occur. So in March, we're going to be, you'd be bringing in, you'd, a hundred, say, a hundred families from different organizations to stay in hotel rooms in town, and go out to the restaurants, and buy, you know, things in town, and that's going to happen, you know, for, for a weekend or two. It's going to allow for, you know, it rained all of July, and Parks and Recreation, what are those kids going to do if we have a rainy period of time? There's a giant surface now for them to utilize. It is going to allow for outside folks to come into town and, or maybe locals, and put on a, a show, so if they wanted to have a, we'll do a bridal show, or a baseball card show, or whatever, that's available. And so it's, it's a, it's a, it becomes effectively an expo center that can also be used for sports, as opposed to a limited sporting facility.
Any other questions at this point? Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you, guys.
Keep us informed.
Yeah, check out the website.
So a lot more work to do on this, and just, just so you're aware, the last day to hold a public hearing is January eighteenth. We are hopeful to have preliminary pricing, finalized preliminary pricing on January fifth.
Nobody knew.
Which we will most likely be having the other bond hearings that evening. So we're also going to tentatively schedule bond hearings for January twelfth and January eighteenth, depending on how this comes together and, and when we begin to look at the final scope, and looking at making cuts and whatnot.
Yeah, and I will put in each one of your box tomorrow, a, the fundraising material that the Friends have put out, so you can see what they've done. Okay, next one?
So the next one is Public Safety Building Construction Grade Bid Documents, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of developing construction grade bid documents for the public safety, for public safety services facility planning. The funding for this project shall be paid for by transferring up to seventy-five thousand dollars from the existing Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund. Furthermore, passage of this article will authorize two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand in funds to be raised by general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA thirty-two-seven, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact, nine cents per thousand of assessed valuation, and this has been amended by legal counsel. So we, we actually held a meeting today of the Public Safety Building Committee, got some further direction going forward, and exactly what Dave just said, this project, you know, after we get through the new year, we plan on attacking this with a public information campaign as to where we're going. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions?
Will there be something like, I mean, that popwhalen.org is a great idea. Will we have something like that, one button on the website or something, you know, on the town website, where people can watch as we get closer, they can watch this whole progress of this?
So I, I believe that there is already that on the town website, which has all the historical documents to date, existing conditions reports, the various plans which are being proposed, and tomorrow, I, I have a telephone conversation with the architect regarding the, the next phase of this, and hopefully, we can make more of those items available as that becomes available, but it is under the, the town webpage.
I think what Brian is saying, you know, on our front page, whether we can put a link to it, that it goes right in instead of.
Yeah, so there's a button, so that people can say.
Instead of hunting for.
Safety complex project, and they hit it, and then it's, it's right there for them, so that they can see this going forward.
I, I'll have a conversation with David Baker and see what we can make happen there.
Okay, next one?
Uh, next one, Article Z, Fire Truck and Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars to be added to the existing Fire Truck and Apparatus Replacement Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of Trustees of Trust Funds, with the selectmen designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, eight cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This has been approved by legal counsel.
Any discussion, any concerns? Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Dispatch Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the existing Dispatch Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of replacement of the dispatch console, and, that's supposed to be, and other related equipment installation and other related expenses, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with selectmen designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, two cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This has been approved by legal counsel.
Any questions? Okay, next one?
Sewer pump station upgrade, Lainer Street, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for the purpose of engineering and constructing a new Lainer Street pump station, to allow the board of selectmen to expend such monies as become available from the state and federal governments, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take any other, any action, or pass any other vote related thereto. This project to be funded from rapid infiltration-based and lawsuit settlement, therefore, this project will not result in any increase in the tax rate. We've been working on the reconciliation of the RIB settlement. We're pretty close to where we feel very comfortable with the numbers that we have, and they will fall within this. If you have any questions specific to that, I think Casey can answer them. Any specific questions to the project, Dave would be able to answer.
And we're going to get a printout on that, on what you're doing?
Yeah, we, we, we basically have a, a pretty good rundown of it. There's, there's a slight deviation, but in the big scheme of the, the monies which was received, we, Casey feels very comfortable with where we're at, and we can get that rundown to you.
Okay, good. Any other questions, concerns, selectmen? Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Okay, next one, seasonal water line replacement. This is a bond. Again, we did speak with bond counsel about this today. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing existing seasonal water lines with buried mains throughout the water system. Further, to authorize the issuance of five hundred thousand in bonds, notes for this project in accordance with RSA thirty-three, the Municipal Finance Act. Authorize the board of selectmen to negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds, notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereon, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply or obtain and accept federal, state, or other aid grants or donations, if any, which may be available for said project, and that may reduce the amount of the bond, and to comply with all the laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take any other action or pass any other vote relative thereto. Notwithstanding the general obligation nature of the bonds, it is the intention of this project, intention that this project shall not, shall, shall be paid by the Water System Enterprise Fund, and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. And this has been amended by legal counsel, bond counsel. And any particular questions relative to, to the project, Dave would be able to answer.
I don't have a question, but we were also going to get an, an accounting on the, the cash in this fund?
I don't think we have that at this point. I mean, we have what the audit report says. I mean, we have what the audit report says, but we can look into that.
Board members, anybody else? Okay, next one.
I'm sharing this one.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you're aware, again, this is the two bonds. It shows a 10-year and a 20-year bond, and this is based on the estimated assessed valuation, that's how they do it, and it is in the back of your packet. So we discussed last time the dockside upgrades. We have two warrant articles for you to consider. One is the cash option, and the other is the bonded option. We discussed cash because of, or bond because of the escalation that we observed in this particular project. We did speak with bond counsel about this today, with some, some good feedback. But the cash option is as follows. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 for the purpose of reconstructing and upgrading the Wolfborough Bay Commercial Docks and Wharf. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 337, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact, 29 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This particular article would be paid for in one year, and it would be done. That's, that's this option. The other option would be to bond the project, and this particular article has been approved by bond counsel. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 for the purpose of reconstructing and upgrading the Wolfborough Bay Commercial Docks and Wharf. Further, to authorize the issuance of 700,000 in bonds and notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the board of selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereon, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, and other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all state laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take any other action, or to pass any other vote relative thereto. This has been approved by bond counsel. We have provided you with two options relative to this project, a 10-year bond and a 20-year bond. The 10-year bond would be, excuse me, the 20-year bond would be three cents per thousand for the, for the first year, and then two thereon out. And the 10-year is four cents, and then three thereon out, for your consideration. And again, those are in the back of your document, and they are marked docs.
Do you want a decision on that tonight?
I, I think we need to decide which way we're going to go, whether we're going to bond it, or whether we're going to pay cash. That would certainly help us moving forward, so that we can continue to engage bond counsel or remove this article.
Okay, I think then the board needs to go to your spreadsheet in the back, because that really lays it out for us. And your cash coming down, you have 2.2 million about. And the other you have, so if we bonded this, we're looking right now at 2 million in cash?
Yeah, I don't have my glasses, but I believe that is correct.
2,690,000.
Yeah, I see that. Boy, that didn't seem to hit with this other one. So you have, you took the hun, the million out from the rows and put it under other?
Yep. So right now, the, if, if we were to bond this article, the amount being raised by taxation is 2,662,269 dollars. Last year, we were at about 2.2 million in warrant article appropriations. And again, this is, at this point, we are looking at 96, or, excuse me, 86 cents in estimated taxation on these warrant articles. Last year, we were at 96 cents with the warrant articles that we brought forward. If we take this particular project and make it cash, I think it brings us to like a dollar 10, or right in that ballpark, for warrant articles.
Board members, need to weigh in. Brad?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to bond it, and I think I'd lean towards the 10-year bond with the 700,000. Only a penny difference each year going forward on the tax rate, from what we saw, those numbers very quickly there. And that keeps us, you know, at the, just under the 2.1 million for the, for the cash articles here, that keeps it at the 2,690,000, and hold us at the 80s, right now at least hold us at the 86 cents per, per thousand impact.
Dave?
I agree with Brad on the 10 years. Still paying about 70, $70,000 in interest, but better than the 20-year, which is 892,000.
Yeah, the 20-year is 192,000 in interest, yeah.
Right. I think I would go along with a 10-year bond, this particular project.
Brian?
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm the same with that. I think, we'll go bond. So this one's out, we're on agreement.
10-year.
10-year.
Correctly, we're leaning toward the 10-year.
Beginning about the time value of money, we can go to 10 years.
Okay. Next article is Bay Street Sidewalks, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $72,100 for the purpose of designing, securing easements in preparation for future construction bid documents. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact is three cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Dave and I had a long conversation about this particular project, the volume of projects that are coming down in front of us, the amount of work that this particular project is, is going to require. We think that it's prudent to back this particular warrant article out. Dave, anything you want to add to that?
Board members? I don't have any problem backing. I really would like to see us go forward, but when I see some of the projects that we have on the plate and have to do, I just don't see Dave having enough time in the day to do this, even though it's a very needed project to go forward. I'd like to make sure that we get it towards the top of the projects next year, and-
Okay, so we will-
That's just me.
Yep.
I'm going to go down the line.
Yeah, I agree. I think that if we, money, this money would be better spent to fixing some of our existing sidewalks. I saw them working on a sidewalk in downtown today and, or yesterday, and redoing it all. So, yeah, before we take on more sidewalks, let's, let's work with what we have now. We're going to be rebuilding all the sidewalks down on Dockside, too, during that whole reconstruction of the parking lot. So I, I agree, we should put this one off.
Luke?
I agree. I mean, I like to see it still at the top of the list. I mean, you have Taylor Home, other things being done up there, and, you know, the future of the boat museum, it's going to, there's going to be a need. But Dave Ford has a lot on his plate, and, you know, if he's, if he's good with that, then I'm good pushing it out of here.
Dave?
Hi.
Brad?
Yeah, I agree, too. I think, you know, we've got, you know, so much on our plates right now, we're putting on all our departments and everything, that I think bump this off a year would be good. But I agree, I don't want to lose track of it either. I want to, sure that we, you know, don't shelve it and have to dust it off in five years, that we, you know, take a look at it next year, too.
Yeah, dribble this one and let it go, and in a little ways, and we do need to eventually go forward on it, but I don't think this is, okay, next one.
Okay. Town road upgrades, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,300,000 for the purpose of upgrading town roads, sidewalks, and drainage system, to authorize funds in the amount of $1 million from the town's unassigned fund balance, upgrades, and $300,000 from general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact, 13 cents per thousand, approved by legal counsel. In your packet, you should have a breakdown of the unassigned fund balance, as I discussed at the last meeting. If we were to utilize this, that would leave our unassigned fund balance at 2,587,611 dollars, or 6.66%. Had a long conversation with Casey on this. We are comfortable with that level going forward, and we feel that the $1 million being placed into the roads is a, is a good use of funds, and helps to maintain our roads without having such a significant impact on the voters.
Board members, anybody? Nice to have this printout. That really gives us a sense of where we are. I really appreciate that kind of documentation. No comments, let's go on to the next one.
Water lane up, line upgrades, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund for the purpose of upgrading existing water mains. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. And no tax rate impact, as it's on the water users, and it's approved by legal counsel.
Any issues, anybody? Move on.
Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited in the existing Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with the selectmen agents designated as agents to expend funds in this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, four cents per thousand of assessed valuation, approved by legal counsel. Dave spoke earlier to this particular project. You know, this is going to hit us quickly. There's, there's a desire for some stormwater management at that location, and that's, that's going to become pricey. This is a good start to keeping that project moving and building a bank account for it.
Any questions, comments? Next one.
Water Resources Non-Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the non-capital reserve fund pursuant to RSA 351C, for the purpose of a watershed management plan, including engineering, design, permitting, best management practice, stormwater drainage, and nutrient mitigation, grant matching, and education. There's a couple of errors in this one. This is under the custody of trustee of trust funds. Selectmen are designated as agents to expend the capital reserve fund. We did also have construction in here, as discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
I'm not sure how that got omitted on my part. Estimated tax rate impact, two cents per thousand, assessed valuation, and this was amended by legal counsel. The amendment was the RSA number changed.
Okay. And so we'll get the word construction in there. All right. Any other comments, concerns? Okay, next one.
Waste water treatment capital reserve fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 to be deposited in the existing wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund, under the custody of trustee of trust funds, with the selectmen as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, seven cents per thousand of assessed valuation, this has been approved by legal counsel. This is just building the nest egg for that project that's coming down the pike this year. We didn't score terribly high with the grant funding, but this will allow us to continue to work, make any emergency repairs at the facility, and continue the planning, so that we can put ourselves in a better position for grant funding in the future.
Dave, are there any projects you're going to use due to that plant this year? I mean, you had a million dollars that you were planning to use over time, is, or is this just going to be a savings account at this point?
No, no, we are at risk on certain things, so we're very concerned about certain elements, so we are going to keep a buffer. But we do need to proceed, like Jim said, the basis of design, and we need to work a little harder on our grant application. I think we could score higher, now that we went through this process of the fire this year. We do feel next year is going to be another round, and it could be a lot of money there. So we're really going to get further the conceptual master plan to a basis of design report. At the same time, we are going to be doing the flow and load study. Recently, there's been a lot of discussion, and I've said a lot of things over the years, and we need to get that clarified, what capacity is left. And we, just to remember, we did have a plant that's designed for 600,000 gallons a day, because of the effluent disposal system. We have downgraded that significantly, and we had justified that with a study of where we are at the time we downgraded that. And we were looking at reducing our infiltration by a certain amount. We did put that project off, because the priorities go. We have plenty of wastewater for inflow of the existing town, but we're talking about changing the density, or bringing in a hotel, or a lodge user, or another project like, say, the Harriman Hill project. Then we're, we gotta, we gotta be understanding that we could expand, but it's the F, the spray area is what we're trying to close down. And that would be the area, if we had to expand additional discharge, it would be at that location. So we have that in reserves, but the hope is we wouldn't have to use that for 20 years. And the hope is that we would keep the flow down and not encourage any big users. So that was my, was my interpretation. We do need to do an update, because over the last two years, we've had a lot of people move into town.
Mm-hmm.
Water use has gone up dramatically, wastewater is going up, but we are reducing ionized, so the wastewater is stronger. So that has an impact on the plant. So we're looking at that analysis going forward, and we will have, so this money is going to fund that project also. So that's why it's important. So that's, a lot of money is going to, but we're also holding off on any emergency that might come up, because we know it will be at least two years before we see big money.
Am I correct, the plant is 650 million gallons a year? Wasn't that 650?
Okay, you always get confused. So the plant is rated at 600,000 gallons per day, which would equate to 144 million gallons, or 163 million for the year. We are only at 100 million now, 105 million, depending on the year and rainfall. So we are permitted to be, you know, depending on total gallons per year, or average daily flow.
Okay.
And, and that's where we're capped now, by the effluent disposal, not at 600,000, but at, say, 340,000.
And the spray field adds how much?
80,000, 80,000 gallons a day, or 30 to 35 million gallons a year, in its present condition. Means we could increase or decrease that, depending what technology we use going forward. But at this point, that was not in the short-term plan.
Right. So the way it's set up now, without us sticking any more money into it, you're looking at about 30 to 35 billion gallons a year?
That's what we're going to plan on doing next year, and the question, whether we renew that permit and keep it running, that's the question we'll have to be addressing with this next level of-
Brian, did I see you?
Yeah, while you, while you're here, can I go back and ask a question?
Yeah, while you, while you're here, can I go back and ask a question on something else, or?
No, you can ask a question on something else.
Okay. So, on, on Article Q, the Town Road Upgrades, is there any way we can sharpen the pencil and get the $1.3 million down, or is it, is there any other way? I'm just wondering. Um, I, I like to see as little of an impact on the taxes as possible, and that's a high, one of, the only higher one. You ca- we took care of the 29 cents on, on the sidewalks, but it is 13 cents per thousand. So it's just something I was wondering if we can have any savings anywhere in that project?
No.
Brian, that is the warrant article that passes by the highest amount year after year after year after year. The people of this community want the roads fixed. By the time they vote in March, they're tired of the frost heaves and the bumps and everything else, and it goes through.
I would also, I would also back that up with saying, um, huh, the bid documents are in. We're not really prepared to speak to them, but, um, we really don't have any wiggle room.
And, and just to recall, we did the road surface management study, which is asset management based, and back, uh, four years ago, we said we had to be at 1.3 million for town roads. We have been working on state roads and other aspects, so we would be short-circuiting. Finally, I got it this far. So I hate to be so blunt, but I think we got the support. No, we want to stay at 1.3 million, and we want this to be a fixture going forward. Because that's what we need to do, to maintain the 66 miles of road we have, and then to, uh, to get, upgrade the ones that are really bad trip.
And this one's for you and Jim. Um, did you find out if it's legal to do a betterment fee on the seasonal water lines?
No. Uh, so we, we did have a brief conversation with legal counsel today, um, about the, some of this stuff. Um, that particular warrant article, um, state does not review them, so we ended up having to take those back and get them to legal counsel for further review. So that'll be a conversation.
Would add, the, 'cause we had this discussion earlier with Mark, and I do recall specifically, the, um, betterment assessments are for road acceptance, but we cannot, if, if, if the road accept, if we accepted the road and the water line, then possibly. But where it's only gonna be water line, then it's gonna be by easement, and we cannot do a betterment assessment. What we, I think you actually suggested, and I think that's what we're gonna look for, is a connection fee, so that will go from a seasonal to a year-round, and I think a, a, a connection fee, and that's to be worked out, uh, and, and that's what we're gonna propose shortly when we come back, 'cause we're gonna be doing a water rate study.
That's right.
Updating with, with today, uh, the bonds, as we see of them right now.
Yep.
So Underwood Engineers is gonna be coming back shortly, uh, with that, um, and, and that impact on the rates. And, um, we'll also be able to talk to that, 'cause we'll be looking at an amendment to the, this rate schedule. That's where we're going.
And that'll give us, that, we'll know that we can, the cash that we're gonna use, there is some cash in here, is in the fund, and how much cash we maintain in that fund? Because if the bond rates went down for a while, we talked about putting some of the money in a capital reserve account for major projects. So we, you're gonna address all that when you come back?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any question on that? All right. Jim, next one?
Um, Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $185,000 to be deposited in the existing Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust funds, with selectmen designated as agents to expend from, expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, eight cents per thousand of assessed valuation, approved by legal counsel.
Any questions? Hearing none. Let's go on to the next.
Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, established for the purpose of making needed repairs and performing needing maintenance to town-building facilities. This capital reserve fund is under the custody of trustees of trust funds, with selectmen designated as agents to expend capital reserve funds. Estimated tax rate impact, two cents per thousand of assessed valuation, approved by legal counsel.
Any questions? Next one.
Solid Waste Site Upgrades to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of performing repairs at the solid waste facility and developing a facility's master plan. This appropriation is nonlapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral seven, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact, five cents per thousand of assessed valuation, has been amended by legal counsel. Um, this came in, it came to us in the budget as a capital outlay request for 95,000. In talking with the budget committee, they would prefer to see this pulled out and put in as a warrant article. Uh, conversations with Dave, uh, Casey, and myself, we felt that if we were gonna go for a warrant article, that it would be important not only to repair the facility, but to develop a master plan for that facility in the future. So, we, we've got a comprehensive plan on, on management and operations and replacement cycle of, of items and repairs at that facility.
Any concern?
Just thank you very much, Jim.
Next one.
Department of Public Works Truck and Employee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $139,600 for the purpose of purchasing an additional 1.5-ton plow truck equipped for winter road maintenance, and to hire an additional equipment operator effective July 1, um, in the Public Works Highway Division. Vehicle 100,000, position with benefits, 39.6, for a total of 139,600. Estimated tax rate impact, six cents per thousand. This was amended by legal counsel.
I have one question. I wonder whether we need to put some wording in there, say, uh, position and benefits, but it's only for half a year. I think the public, or the voter, needs to know that it's not for a full year. Anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns? All right. Go on to the next one. The Sidewalk Capital Reserve.
Uh, Establish a Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to create a sidewalks capital reserve fund for the purpose of maintaining existing, existing sidewalks. Said funds shall be under the custody of trustee of trust funds, and to be designated, um, and to designate the selectmen as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact, two cents per thousand, amended by legal counsel.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Um, I'm wondering if the board wants to keep it at 50,000, or if they want it to be more.
Well, I, I think, do you have an amount, an amount in mind?
Um, I don't know if we would want the first year to put in more to get the fund having a, a decent balance, and then maybe scale it back over the next few years. I just see that, um, they could, the department could use some money to repair and keep our sidewalks in good shape. We've, we've taken Bay Street out of the equation for 72,000, so maybe we can take a portion of that and, and add it to the Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund. It might end up back in Bay Street sidewalks someday.
Do you have an amount? Do you wanna make a motion?
Um, how about move to, um, change the $50,000 in Article AE to $75,000 to create a sidewalk capital reserve fund for the purpose of maintaining existing sidewalks.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Well, this is existing sidewalks.
Correct.
And if you ever walked from the high school to South Hall, probably you'll find that most of that has to be replaced. So I don't disagree that maybe we ought to put more money in that.
Brad?
Yeah, I'd like this. I think it's, uh, I think the 75 is a good amount to start with, um, for this year. Um, like Brian said, you're taking, you know, some of the money that we took out of the Bay Street sidewalks and put in this to get this one established and get it going. So I think, I think 75 is a good place to start.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm gonna change that to 75.
Okay, and the, the remainder of the articles are the, the bonded articles, um, that require, um, review by le- legal counsel for, uh, state revolving fund.
So have these changed at all since we dealt with them? Should we just leave them be at this point, then, to go on over and read them?
I, I think that makes sense. I mean, there, there's been no changes essentially to these. So, you know, we, these are gonna get very wordy based on the, the grants that have been received.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, uh, we just spoke with Mark relative to some of this, and, um, they're hopeful to be able to get on to it this week, um, which point I'm sure there'll be telephone conversations with myself, Dave, and Casey about these four articles.
And so that you'll get us out of draft. We'll need drafts of those, um, before the bond hearings.
Yep.
Uh, the other thing we have not done is done any of the bolding on any of these warrant articles.
Excuse me?
I'm bolding. We take lines and we bold them so they stick out. We usually do the purpose and the money. I'm willing to go through and, and, and do a bunch, and I don't know if any other member wants to do that bonding, uh, that bolding.
The, I think the only problem with the bolding that we've identified is DRA doesn't allow that in their system. Is that correct, Casey? So when we put it into DRA, they, they don't bold it, but we can certainly bold it for the town report and whatnot.
Can we do it for the ballot? 'Cause that's where we really want it, is we want people to see. It just, some of them are long, and you take the words that are most important for them to focus on, and we bold those.
Yep. We, we can do that, and so we're, we're not terribly pressed for time on that, but yes, we can do that.
I can, I'll play around. I'll, I'll do some drafts of that, um, based on what we've done in the past.
Perfect.
And the other thing for the board, we are going to hold a, um, public hearing on January 5th for the majority of these warrant articles. After that public hearing, we'll do the voting, 'cause then we'll have, we'll have gotten public input on there, and we should be ready at that time to vote. So that is on the 5th, uh, right after the public hearing, after we hear from the public on the bonded warrant article. Is that okay with everybody? Is there anything else, yeah, with this?
Uh, one thing I would like to talk about, about this is, is the recording, um, of the presentation of the warrant articles. Um, how, how do you wanna do that? Um, last year, we did it exclusively via go-to meeting. Do you wanna do it in this building? Um, and I'll just have to coordinate with Timothy when, when that occurs, and I'm getting a thumbs up from him.
I, I prefer to do it in person. I can do it virtually, but I have not great internet.
Yeah, we, we can do that here. I just need to...
People, I just think you get a chance to, you know, talk to each other and maybe make a comment that you would, two people wanna make, and it's harder, I think, when you're virtual. Is everybody comfortable with doing it here? And now we just have to find the date. And I was thinking the week of the 17th. We, thinking, um... We could possibly have a board of selectmen's meeting on the 18th on a bond, so I was wondering whether, I think other years we've do it before our board meeting on the 19th, come in, do the taping, and then follow with the board meeting. I think if we go into the next week, we're running too close to the deliberative session.
No, I, I think the week of the 17th is the right week. Looking at my schedule really quickly, um, Wednesday and Thursday are best for me.
But Dave, you work on a Thursday, so Thursday won't work, so I think...
If time on a Thursday, time...
We, we could set it.
Yeah. Music back here by...
Okay, so...
But don't...
Well, Luke, would it be better for you to do it when we're, when, when it's not business hours?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me.
So here's our choice. We can do it...
Whatever works for me.
Um, we can either do it like around 2:00 or 3:00 on the 19th, and then go into a board of selectmen's meeting, or we can turn around and wait until the, uh, Thursday, the 20th, and do it at 5:00. Whatever works best for people. I think it's, I think we all should be there.
Do it at 5:00.
So, do you wanna do it at, uh...
5:00 on the 19th?
On the 20th, on the 20th. That's a Thursday. Okay?
Yep.
20th at 5:00. Casey, are you here to give us some great news?
No, sorry. Um, yes, the meeting's almost over. That's the great news. No, I just had one question. I wasn't sure if I, I just missed it, but when you talked about the seasonal water line, um, there was two presentations of the bond, 10 years and 20 years. Did you make a decision?
I, 10?
10.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I just didn't hear that, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Set, uh, meeting dates, time, and location for end of year. Is that you, Jim? Is that the December 28th?
So, December 28th, we'd like to hold a meeting, um, for the board to, um, review any encumbrances and roll forwards for the, the next year, um, so that we can basically close the book, and we know what, what we're spending, and where that money's going. As well, I, I'd be hopeful that, if we could, that evening as well, um, vote on the collective bargaining agreement.
And we were gonna do that at 5:00, weren't we?
Yes.
Because we're going to be already there for a budget committee, so we're looking at 5:00.
Correct.
Yes, I did reach out to the library and book, um, an hour earlier than the budget committee, since two of you were gonna be there anyways, and I did reach out to cable to make sure that they could set up earlier also. Uh, it wouldn't be live streamed, but it would be taped, just like the budget committee.
Fine, I mean, we're not gonna do much.
Tuesday, the 28th.
Tuesday, the 28th, at 5:00 at the library.
Library?
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Yeah, we do.
Are you bringing the food?
I would say 5:00.
No food.
5:00, Jim?
Sure, I'll bring a gourmet dinner.
Yes.
Okay. The question is, we have the MOU in, on our agenda. It says a Libby Museum meeting. I'm wondering whether we need to go in as trustees of the Libby Museum. I think we're just accepting the MOU, and the MOU is with the board of selectmen. Brad?
Well, I think, too, do we wanna also have a discussion on moving forward and, with the committees and stuff regarding getting the, uh, um, study started with the business plan and the feasibility plan and stuff like that? We have a few of the members here tonight with us, so...
Are you saying you wanna go into a Libby Museum?
Trustees.
Meeting? You wanna do that, to do that?
I...
Okay, I'm, I just, yeah, no, okay. Um, I need, Brad, you're gonna give me a motion, aren't you?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we enter, um, into a, uh, meeting for the, as, uh, trustees of the Libby Museum.
Second.
Second. For, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Who's gonna bring, are you gonna speak to this, Brad, or Jim, or, or we have somebody you wanna bring up from the audience, or?
I can start if you'd like, and then...
Sure, that would be great.
Um, as everybody's aware, um, Friends of Libby Museum group met, um, and, and approved and signed the MOU, and we have some of them in attendance with us this evening, and, um, you know, I think that's, that was a, um, a long time coming. I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's here. I'm sure the Friends group that's here is happy that, uh, we're at this point now also. And, um, so the, to keep the ball rolling and stuff, that's why I kind of would like to see us, you know, meet in this format here as, as trustees, and, and have a discussion regarding moving forward with our, with the next step, which is gonna be, obviously, developing, um, the business plan and the feasibility plans for the, moving forward with the renovation in addition to the, uh, to the Libby. So, with that, I'll, you know, if Jim wants to add anything... So with that, I'll, if Jim wants to add anything, or if you want to entertain, have Alana or somebody come up and speak to us too. It's, you know, up to the board here, so...
I think we should have a discussion, and we need somebody. Alana, do you have any ideas on how you want to do this? Put a feasibility and management plan? And do you give it any thought to it?
Sure. Thank you very much. Alana Albee, Chair of the Friends of the Libby Museum, just for the record. Yes, well, what we wanted to say first was thank you for the MOU. We're pleased. Took a long time in the making, but we're on the road. We haven't actually stopped fundraising. I just want to make that really clear. We slowed down our major gift requests until we had the MOU, because as you know, we needed that for many donors that want to make large gifts. We've continued in our appeals and our online fundraising. We're now at, sorry, 1.2 million roughly, and we'll continue towards our 2 million goal. We have been talking with an advisor on our governance side and also more recently to WEDCO, et cetera, on doing a business plan. We know that we need to be clear from the Friends' side what we want to do going forward from the point of restoration on. And that's what we are working on now. But I think it would be worthwhile to have a small committee that we can talk to about the way forward, both on the restoration front. Do we need to have recostings or not? How far do we need to go before we can propose to the Selectmen a potential warrant article for your share of the funding, et cetera? And so that's our suggestion as a technical committee to sit and work some things out, come back to the full trustees for decisions.
I don't know how quickly you're moving forward, but at some point, we're going to have to do a new, a new cost estimate. And I kind of held back on my mind that until you were close enough, because I don't want to get a cost estimate, and then six months later, it doesn't. So we really are not going to be talking about 2 million and a million.
Sure. And so we...
It's a 70/30 split.
Yeah, I think we need to start talking about it in a 70/30 split, because I don't want the public to think where it's only going to be that and then show up with something larger than that. It's fine with me. Does anybody want to be the... You're, you're going to do a ma, you're working to get your management plan together. How about the feasibility plan?
Well, in terms of the feasibility plan, we understand that the feasibility estimates for the way of running it will depend upon how it's going to be run. So we need to get our ideas together before we actually move forward on contracting somebody to do a full feasibility. And we feel that that should be done with the town.
Mm-hmm. No, you can't do it in a vacuum.
That's right.
And we all are, at least I'm pretty well clear about that. You can't do it without us, you know? And probably, I think you're right. We need to have discussions about the management plan as you develop it.
Yes, I mean, our assumption going into looking at like, what do we want our role to be in this? And what's our vision? Is the starting point where the techn, last technical committee left off, where we would look at what will it cost to run the museum for the same months that we currently do and the same way, more or less, that we currently do? And then use that as a base to then look at shoulder months, visitor numbers, et cetera, comparisons with other museums, and work it forward that way. So we need to get our baseline numbers in order, but we're working on that.
Okay. Board members, who would like to be on the committee? I'm sure Brad does.
Yeah, I definitely would like to be on that committee.
I will be.
And Dave? We'll give those...
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
There we are.
Do we still want to, because I know we talked earlier this, that through the town, we prepare the RFP and stuff like that. Is there still a model or a direction we want to head in, in this direction? Or you want to wait to hear back from committee meetings and then kind of go from there on that?
I think, yeah. I think, yeah, I think you need to go and get it kind of started and then to know what RFP you're going to look for, what you're looking for. I think that would be, you want to try to get back to us monthly or every other month? I think constant reporting would be...
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we try and do it monthly? And if, if things go slow for whatever, we could just say, well, we don't have much to report this month. We'll speak, we'll bring information in next, next month, so...
Sure, sure. Okay, that's, is it, board members, are you all comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Alrighty. I need a motion to come out of the trustees' meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Any other business? Brian?
Yes. I just had a question for Jim. I had a short conversation with him about a mini excavator. Talking to some of the people at the Department of Public Works and the Water Department, they said that they regularly rent a mini excavator. They say two to three days a week during the season, whenever it can be used. I found out that the price of it is over $300 a day to rent. So if I put the numbers together in my head, it was, it ended up being a lot of money a month, even if you break it out into 12 months. Looking and finding some equipment that was for sale with low hours, 300 or 400 hours online, I found that we could buy an excavator for somewhere between $38,000 and $45,000. Five percent, with 0% interest for five years, the, the cost comes out to $666 a month. Now, I know there will be maintenance by our crew to keep it running and things like that. But if they rented it two days a month for the year, and we average it out to that, it ends up being a break even, but they always have a piece of equipment at their disposal if they need, they need it. And according to their numbers, they use it way more than that. They use it eight, 10, 12 times a month during eight months of the year. So if they're, if they're using it 80 times at 300, I mean, it's way more money to rent than it is to purchase a, a small mini excavator. So it's just something that I wanted to know, you know, just have the board be aware of. And, and I think that they, they're going to bring some, they told me they were going to bring some numbers to Jim and, and see what it would look like.
Jim, I think, I think that we would have to have appropriated for a new truck or new mini excavator that we, I, I guess we'll need to ask. We can't just take money that's for...
Correct. Yeah, this is just investigation phase.
Okay, so you're not trying to do it for this budget?
No.
Okay. Then I'm...
I would say that that's definitely a conversation that I can have with Dave. And if that means that we have to add to the fleet, that's something we can do. But it, we'll have to look at the capital reserve appropriation, because the cost of all this equipment is going up, it seems like, by the day. So it's a conversation I can have with Dave going into CIP season for 2023.
That's where you're putting it. That's no problem. I thought you were trying to get it in 2022. Okay.
Madam Chairperson, one other thing that was brought to my attention. The board's got a vote to accept the MOU from the Friends of the Libby. I know you signed it, but the, they would, they would like you to vote to...
And get another vote?
Accept it.
Brad?
Make a motion?
Second. Would we make the motion Selectmen, or do we have to go back to the trustees?
No, Selectmen is the one who signs the, the trustees don't.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the acceptance of the MOU between the Town of Wolfboro and the Friends of the Libby Museum for the fundraising and the expansion and renovation of Libby Museum.
Second.
Okay, second from Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Take care of that?
Done.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, committee reports. I'll start here with Brian, and we'll go this way today.
All I have for reports is budget committee.
Okay.
And, oh, I will say this. I did have something that I wanted to say. I wanted to say that Mrs. Carpenter has designed a budget format that has added clarity to the process. It has streamlined our discussions and shortened our meetings, and I thank her very, very much.
Okay.
I had a chamber, I think it was a quarterly, at the Full Belly Bar and Grill. It was breakfast. And Propane did a sponsorship, and they did a little presentation. And I kind of reviewed at that point what information we had at the warrant articles. It was pretty well attended, some new members to the chamber. I've had, went with Linda too. I had, we had a Wolfboro Waters meeting last week, and I had a communications meeting after that for Wolfboro Waters. And I attended today a public safety building meeting.
Okay, I've been attending the Friends of Pop Whalen. I've had three meetings on that. They're working very hard on their economic forecast for when the addition is done and working on their management plan. Wolfboro Waters met. We had a presentation on Boat Wakes by Steve Wingate and a little study he had done. We saw some slides from the Lake Minnesotki Association. Anything else, Luke? Okay. And then I joined Ryan for a few budget committee meetings. Dave?
I attended a Conservation Commission meeting. A big part of it was spent on, how do we get rid of the beavers over on the causeway?
That can be hard.
One lady who was there was quite irate about trapping the beavers. There's no way to put a have-a-heart trap out.
No.
They have to be taken care of by a licensed trapper.
Dead on the road that my family has in a summer camp. We've got a guy who did do a have-a-heart trap. But he took them and put them in a pond on his yard, in his property, and I guess I know what happened to them later in the year. But, okay, Brad?
Yeah, see, last week, I had a planning board meeting and a Friends of the Libby Museum meeting. This morning, we had a Wolfboro Community TV board meeting. And also last week, I went up and met at the Highway Garage with the, Highway Department guys went over the specs of the truck that we talked about tonight. And then on, on Monday morning, we went down to Barrington and actually looked at it, drove it, and checked it out, talked to them about it. So that's pretty much been it for me for the past week.
I had a public safety meeting.
You forgot?
That was just this afternoon. And Luke was there as well.
Yes, right. Town managers' report?
Yeah, a few things. With, with your permission, tomorrow night, I would like to give the draft warrant articles to the budget committee so that they can start to get an understanding of where we're at with that. So when we get to the, the point of them voting on them, we've, we've got, they've got a much better understanding. There's no problem with that. I'm going to go ahead with that tomorrow evening.
Anybody have any issue with that? Nope, go ahead.
Good. We're working on the deliberative session. Had a conversation with superintendent. We will be holding it at the Art Center again this year. We will be following their protocols. And there'd be no issue whatsoever there. And one last thing. Last week, in my weekly notes to you, I had talked a little bit about Parks and Recreation and the fact that this year, we're in very good shape with the Parks and Recreation budget. And we've never really had an evaluation of the operations performed at Parks and Recreation. Christine has reached out to UNH, and I also reached out to the Town Managers Forum, and they noted that UNH actually does an excellent job at performing these types of studies and making recommendations of where Parks and Recreation is at and where they'll be going in the future. With your permission, I'm, I'm going to pursue that a little bit more and hopefully have something for you for the 28th so that maybe we might be able to execute that under this year's budget to come back with a product next year that really looks comprehensively at Parks and Rec and makes some, some recommendations and shows us what we're doing well. Christine and Bo are supportive of it. And I, I think based on everything we see happening at that facility, whether it's snowmaking, expansion, expansion of ski trails, opposed expansion of the hockey facility, the beaches, they need help. And I think this would be a tool to give them guidance as to where their strengths are and where improvements can be made. Just would like some feedback from the board on that.
I think it's a good idea myself. You know, there, there's a lot happening by a few people, and it would be nice to know what the best way to organize it. I think that's what we'd get out of here. Board members?
I agree.
UNH will be helping them with a study.
So UNH does actually do the work. They, they had recommended other firms as well, but he as well said, look, we do the same type of work. And I believe it was Farmington and Exeter. Both of them were thrilled with the product that they had received from UNH. So it sounds like it's a good way, and it wasn't terribly expensive. But I plan on having a better handle on that for that 28th meeting.
Dave? Okay?
Yeah, fine with me.
Brad? Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll continue to pursue that. Other than that, the only other thing is, I think we had a wonderful time at the employee Christmas party the other night. That was a great meal, great turnout. It didn't snow, so the Department of Public Works is actually able to show up and enjoy themselves. It was a good night. With that said, it's just been warrant articles and budgets.
I don't know if Alyssa's here. Alyssa? I don't think she is. Okay, so there are no questions from the press. Public input. Is there anybody who'd like to give public input? Come on, Suzanne.
Okay, Pop Whalen. I went through the CIP minutes to get a timeline and costs and what we were talking about. I mean, this has been a nightmare since 2016 and before Pop Whalen has been talked about and in all configurations and all price ranges. And repeatedly, we hear the need of a study, a financial study, projections going forward. But the thing I found interesting was, 2017, Collins reports, "Building recently inspected," quote, noting the building is structurally sound. Then we have 2018 talks about the dehumidification and insulation projects. And there were prices given on this progression as we went along. The discussion of a, the overall plan, the maintenance plan. 2018, Collins met with Rico. There's a whole, there is a whole plan set from Rico. I don't know if they're an engineering firm or builders. I don't know what they were, but that's all available. And at that time, they were talking about the, replace and insulate the roof and walls for $955,000 and break the project out into phases. And no one's disputing the roof is... And no one's disputing the roof is meeting its age limit. That's not the question, but you've got to understand, as a person that's been going along on this before 2016, at your last meeting, just to hear 4.7 dropped on us without any, and still tonight, without any background on it, and to wait to the public hearing and try to make these points to try and convince you that we're stepping along too big, too fast, without enough independent, outside, professional counseling and assessments. Okay, so, a question was asked, I know I've asked the question when you came on, Mr. Pinio. One of the first things I talked about at the CIP meeting, and I gave out some paperwork that seemed to be disregarded, is that we needed to assess what other towns with hockey rinks are doing, how they manage the buildings, what, do they run in a deficit like us? Could we consider a tri-town or a multi-town project whereby, like school cooperative districts have, whereby, since this project will be, maybe not square footage expanded, but the function will be expanded? Is this not something? There's still so many questions that could be asked before we jump both feet into 4.7 million, even though 2.7 is to be raised.
I was talking, I've talked to a few people in the industry. Most ice rinks don't make money.
I'm not saying make money.
Most go bankrupt.
No, no, that's too general.
Wait, we're not going to argue.
You're on my three minutes anyway.
Suzanne, let him finish and tell you what he is. You don't have to agree with it, but he is going to tell you. Then you may respond.
There are several, there are several rinks in our area that were built, and by the time they were built, the original owner of the rink was into it for so much debt that they ended up having to declare bankruptcy. And this has happened all over the country and through the Northeast. And what they do is, the next people who buy up the property, buy up the property at a lower debt load, and then they manage to make the rink sustainable, but they're not making tons of money. This has happened in Exeter, this has happened in Hooksett, it's happened everywhere. And if you talk to other towns that have rinks in their communities, they're paying a big portion of money to operate their rinks still. Rinks are tough. They're not, they're not, it's very hard for them to just be sustainable. That's what we're going for, is to have our rink be sustainable. And the $4.7 million, it's only, 2.7 is what the Friends of Pop Whalen are going to be contributing, so that's a big number, but it's only a much smaller number.
Suzanne, I'll also, I have here, which is one of the things that the Friends of Pop Whalen has done, they've done a comparison since 2015 coming through to 2020 based on the audit report. And if you take out the depreciation, that's the income and the expenses, and you take out the depreciation, it has not lost money. So I will get you this, so you can take a look at what they have done.
Oh, yes, thank you. I'll be looking at all the documents for sure. But please do not misconstrue what I am saying about the financial end of these rinks. I'm not expecting that the Pop Whalen will make a profit. I'm hopeful that it can run at a break even, or we figure out an operation maintenance formula. You figure it out, but it should be sustainable and it should be pretty much break even. You know, out of these 65,000 people that visited a year, how many are actual ticket paying, ticket paying people that come in and pay for their skates or pay for their time? Or is that including several of the hockey teams that could have 100 on their team or a tournament that has 500 there? So that needs to be thought of.
That has to do with the number of people through there. Those, all those teams play for ice time.
Right. It's just, that's what, that you need, that number, just for that, not people like me that go in and watch and come back out. I don't count as a person using the rink.
They went through by teams and games being played, and they're going to come forward with a economic plan that will show you where they are projected based on the cost today, where we will be in 2023. So you will get that.
All right, so, just so you get a sense of the public hearing, is like, some of these things that I would be asking are, maybe you'd have the answers by then. One other thing was said to us at the CIP is that, actually two things. One was, do these projects, the Back Bay and the town, have to go in tandem or can they be separated? In other words, if the Back Bay doesn't get their money, or prove to you they've got the pledges for the money, that we will only put in for our $2 million, whatever the escalation is on that. I haven't heard that said, but that was told to the CIP committee during the process, that if they don't raise their money at the time of town meeting or a guarantee for town meeting, that we were only going to go for the $2 million. So I'll be making a motion, if we don't see that pledge money, I'll be making a motion to reduce the million to 4.7 to 2. So be prepared for that. But I asked the question in 2018, I think it was maybe in October, given all these scenarios and the roof needing to be replaced, could it be done in phases? And at that time, Matt Sullivan was working on this project, he did a lot of work on that. And he figured out, like, tried to calculate how it could be done in phases, and he had cost estimates at that time. But I question, has consideration been given to replacing the building? In 2018, flat out, and Becky Merrill was town manager at the time, and she had an engineering degree of some sort. And she said, "The building is a Butler structure." That's the name. "And the building is in great shape." And Collins replied, "The building is structurally sound." So we've had more than one party say the building is structurally sound, knowing that the roof needed to be replaced. Again, 2018, requesting feasibility studies, discussion about phasing. Rico revised the, his estimates and said that the E-ceiling may not have to be done. 2019, Phase 1 was $1,001,000. Collins received two quotes that have noted, "The building is structurally sound," and this was September of 2019, "and does not recommend the demolition of the building." So you've got to understand, when you drop, just say, 2.7, and the building's going to be removed from the foundation, out of the blue, when for how many years we've been talking about phasing? And I still wonder if we're capable of making that decision, that it can't be phased and it can't be restored or made sound, that we're going down the wrong path. And, and remember, we've put in over $1 million into that building since I've lived here, which isn't that long. So we're going to throw that away and are going to go on the word of, no disrespect of what I'm hearing here, that we're going to rip it all down, we're going to put up something for 2.7 or 2. We've put $1 million in it, we're just going to throw that away, start over. And yet, where is the guarantee that this is going to be a four seasons great tourist attraction? And by the way, when I first started on the CIP, that was one of the things I was a proponent of, that perhaps this could be something like that, but not for the town of Wolfboro to go it alone. So annually, it falls short $40,000 roughly. And I had asked back then, 2019, if the entire site would be remodeled and brought down to the studs, when we were talking about the phases, and I was trying to get a sense of how it would be remodeled. And the president of Back Bay Hockey stated, "No." And the structure framework is in good shape. And we talked about a business plan again. And if we did these phases, Mr. Pinio stated the lifespan, when improvements completed, would be given of 40 years. And at that time, the figure was 3.7. Need a business plan. And then we talked about the phases and what versus what. And I asked if the building had a full viability assessment. Collins said, "Yes." One of the questions I will be asking, oh, and their, their firm is Banwell or Bunwell?
Banwell.
Banwell.
Is that, are we using them too? Oh, that's nice, the fox is watching the chicken coop.
So I can speak to the structure itself, Suzanne, and I take a little bit of offense to that because Banwell is the architect, they bring in subs to do this work. The original sub that was chosen was a local sub that did the work when the roof collapse occurred, I believe partial roof collapse occurred, I think in 2002. And you go through that documentation, and that documentation clearly states that the structure needs to be evaluated. It states that, yes, the roof structure, as repaired, meets the snow load of 50 pounds per square foot or square inch, whatever it is. However, as we move forward, nothing was ever done. Then, you're right, we were all under the impression that this structure was in good shape, until we bring that same engineer in to look at the structure this spring, and they say, "This structure is not capable of holding the snow load. In fact, it's only capable of 38 pounds per square foot." We had some issues with that. I had some real issues because you guys told us this in 2002, you didn't follow up with us, which tells me in my former career that this is a safety issue. I don't want you working for us anymore, so we went with another architect. We brought another, excuse me, another structural engineer. The new structural engineer came in, they spent a day on a lift going through the entire structure. They looked at options, which included welding plates onto the existing structure to get it from 38 to 50 pounds, and it was determined that that's cost prohibitive. So we have two structural engineers who have told us that this superstructure that holds up this roof does not meet code, period. So to be quite frank, you know, if, last year, when we came forward with this warrant article for $800,000 and we backed it off because we didn't have the good numbers, you know what? That was the right decision. Going forward, I don't like the numbers either, but you know what? It's the only option we have at this point because the structural steel that's holding that building up is, while in good shape, does not meet code, and there's nothing we can do about that.
Well, there are other options. As I said, maybe we need to be a tri-town or a four-town, quad-town. Maybe we need to get the Brewster involved and have them share the expense. Maybe, maybe, we just don't use it for a year until we figure out what this is going to cost going forward. So, I know, Linda, you're, it's a long, it's a long night, and I've extended my three minutes.
Yes, you have, I just was reminded.
By a lot, but I thought it better to get some of this out before the public hearing because once the public hearing comes, it's, it's set in stone, it's going forward. There's not going to be any change, no one will be willing to make any change. But I would like to know one thing, is how much money, if any, is the town going to, percentage-wise or what have you, be accountable for because of the addition? Now, we were told that the addition is independent of, we could go, if we have to replace that building, we can go replace that building for $2 million, because you're using 4.7. 2.7 is supposedly Back Bay. So out of the, out of the $2 million, are we taking any money or is, to facilitate the addition? We were told that the addition can be independent of itself. If it doesn't fly, we go ahead and we do the building. So I need to know that those two are separate, because if they don't meet their funding, we were told, there's going to be a warrant article for them. We're not going to carry them, and I thought I heard you say, bond 4.7. We should be only bonding our share.
Did not say bond 4.7. I did put into the package that a $4.7 million bond would cost this much. However, a $2 million dollar bond is this much for a 20-year bond.
Okay, so I didn't hear you correctly. So we're only going to bond $2 million?
Correct.
As of tonight?
As of tonight.
Unless that $2 million goes to 2.5 or something crazy, right? And so not, none of the money that we're raising is going to facilitate that addition?
I need to understand what you mean by facilitate that addition.
Well, are we going to pay to upgrade the electric for them? Are we going to pay to?
No, there were, I think there was a sheet, there was a percentage.
There's a cut sheet.
Yeah.
All right, so then I can come in and get all that document?
Yeah, but that document is not ready yet. So the construction grade bid drawing's just actually finished today. The hopes are that for January 5th, CCI will have the construction pricing, but it might be a little bit after that. But that's what they're shooting for, is January 5.
Yeah, but basically, all the reports are in your office?
They're here, there, and everywhere. So there's a file in the Planning Department, there's actually two of them, they're each about that thick.
I don't need copies. But just remember that you had said that the 1.000, the $1,562,660 is a guaranteed price model. That's one number you said. So now you understand where I'm blown away.
Suzanne, I didn't think we were going to, I don't think anybody thought we were going to have to take the whole building down. Nobody knew that. Well, excuse me, the structural engineer that did the work in 2002 knew that, but nobody here knew that until we actually got on-site with them, started discussing this, and they said, "Oh yeah, this is an issue." And we all were beside ourselves.
All right, thank you for the extra time.
Oh, and the great thing is, we heard from Friends of Pop Whalen, they've only been fundraising for, what, three months, they said? And they've already got $1.4 million. So I think that they're going to, oh yeah, and it's only three months, they haven't even started.
We will find out. Do you want to say anything? You sure can. You sure can. Can I get to them?
Yeah, and I, great point. Yeah, great point. 1.4 to date. We have been extremely quiet about our fundraising and our project and our vision. I thought Kurt put it extremely well. We see this, we see the Pop Whalen Ice and Arts Center becoming exactly that, year-round, multipurpose, more than just a hockey rink and a curling. And that's a great benefit to the community. Say that as a parent and as someone who's lived here and watched my, I'm here when I was this big to visit my grandparents. Pop Whalen was my mom's gym teacher. So I'm pretty excited about this, as are the rest of us. Recognize it's not for everybody, but it's a pretty fabulous town to live in when we have it. And we're really excited about that. So Kurt mentioned the website, popwhalen.org. Dynamic, it's fluid. Contact us there if you have any questions. Welcome contact from everybody. We're really excited to go more public with what we're doing and accomplishing and with to acknowledge the partnership we have. Really felt enthroned.
And what will happen when it's all done and finished and built? What do you see as your role after that?
We'll help out any way we can, but happily take a backseat and be thrilled to go into that center and watch kids practice basketball in the spring when it's raining. Practice would be canceled otherwise. Kids practice lacrosse in the fall when the weather's just not working for lacrosse practice outside. See a bridal show, car show, to pickleball. To see all those things happen in addition, kids learning to skate, watch, you know, octogenarians hurl or come play hockey with us. That's, there's nothing wrong with that.
And will you be trying to, or will you be helping support the rink?
Absolutely.
Then also?
Yeah, this is.
You're in it for the long term.
This is a vision, and when we see it realized, we're not just going to walk away. Brilliant, we're committed, absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, I need a motion to go into non-public session.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes.